And good evening. Today is April the 13th, right now it's 7:30 and I'm calling to order this evening's meeting of the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission. For the benefit of those who have not participated in Planning and Zoning Commission now, our procedures are as follows. The Secretary will read the legal notice of the meeting as published in local newspapers. The applicant will be invited to come forward to present the case, explaining to the commission and others present what is being requested of this property. Comments of town agencies will be read for each and application if there are any. First, there'll be clarifying questions from the commissioners and next there'll be an opportunity to clarify questions from the audience. Next, we'll ask those who want to support the application to come forward. Second, we'll ask those who are opposing the application to come forward. As this is a public meeting, it must be recorded. It will be necessary for speakers to identify themselves by stating their name and address before addressing the commission. The applicant will then be free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearing in their regular meeting during which the commission will try and reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as the decision. The commission has the right to appeal to the superior court if desired. Decisions this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling the Planning and Zoning Office at (203) 453-8039 after 9:00 a.m. I'd like to introduce the following members of the Guilford Planning and Zoning Team. We have Richard Hudson, we have George Underhill, Richard Wallace, Walter Corbier, Tom Coston, Rich Meyer, we have Ray Bauer, we have Phil Johnson. Who else we got here?
Josh.
Josh. Frankie Andrea, Reggie Reed, and Lisa Marie Gruber. And filming for us tonight is Shannon Galloway. The Secretary, please read the notice.
Legal notice Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on April 13th, 2016, at 7:30 p.m. Venue change, the Guilford Fire Department, 390 Church Street, Guilford, Connecticut, for the following purposes. Amend zoning code to section 273-187, subsections 7 of the zoning code to eliminate requirement for senior housing in the MBC2 zone district. West River Corporation, 248 Chaffinch Island Road, map 23, lot 3, zone MR1, coastal area management and site plan, construction of a 35-foot by 55-foot building to be used for boat storage and repair, sections 273-73 and 273-91. Copies of these applications are available for inspection in the office of Planning and Zoning Commission, Town Hall South, 50 Boston Street, Guilford, Connecticut. At this hearing, persons may attend and be heard and written communications will be received. Dated at Guilford, Connecticut, this 13th day of April 2016, Richard Meyer, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing on West River Corporation?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
West River, come on down.
Good evening. We are proposing a 35-by-55-foot building. This is Chaffinch Island Road. There's this empty driveway that comes into their boatyard. We place the building close to their driveway, right in this area here, furthest away from the coastal resources. Right now, they do a lot of their work in the yard. We're trying to build a building to put that inside so they can do work when it's raining out in the winter, and it's pretty much the best location for it. During the wintertime, this entire yard is full of boats. I don't know if you guys have ever been down there, but it's jam-packed full of boats. So that gives the best spot for access to and from the building for moving boats in and out to work on them. We've provided for a trip edge along the roof lines for stormwater infiltration. Can't do anything in the ground because obviously you're pretty much right above the marsh elevation. Most of the site was probably filled with marsh where that went. So we do have a favorable letter from DEP. We sent it up there for their review, and being that it's an existing gravel parking lot, they felt no harm was going to be, you know, they're not working within any marshlands or anything like that, so they felt that it was a good spot for it. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to see what the building is.
How high is it?
Twenty-nine feet.
How high?
Twenty-nine.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought there was a...
I read a letter from Kevin.
Yeah, there's another letter.
This is the people eleven, from Kevin, regarding the West River Corporation. The applicant is proposing to construct a 35-by-55 building adjacent to coastal resources of the West River. The construction of the building utilizes several low-impact development techniques such as stormwater from the roof being captured in stone drip line trenches and the construction of the building at an already disturbed location of the site. Operations in the proposed building will reduce some of the current impacts of the boatyard's operations by moving those activities, which includes sanding of boats, bright work, painting, replacing engines and running gear repairs into an enclosed building. It is my understanding from the applicant that dust will be contained with a vacuum sanding system and that there will be no wash water generated within the building. A natural diversity database state-listed species review requested was submitted to CTDEP, Nielsen Barrows Botanist Ecologist, and with the CTDEP reported that five state-listed plant species noted as state-special concern, state-threatened, and state-endangered have been documented close to the proposed work. Nielsen Barrows indicated, given that construction activity will be limited to an area that is currently gravel, negative impacts to state-listed plant species are not anticipated to result from the proposed work. In order to make sure that the coastal resources are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. First, the town of Guilford zoning enforcement officers should be notified to inspect sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to any site work. Soil stockpiles shall be contained by silt fencing and/or hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until all site work has been completed. Any dewatering should be conducted in accordance to the 2002 Connecticut Guidelines for Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control. The zoning enforcement office should be contacted to inspect the dewatering control measures prior to the start of any water pumping. In order to protect state-listed plant species, no excavated materials is to be deposed on any vegetated portion of the site. Since the plans do not indicate a location for excavated material, I suggest that this material will be trucked off-site to an appropriate location. Do you have a problem with any of those?
One thing I want to say is, right now, we don't know what the construction is going to entail because the boatyard is full of boats. Once the boats are gone, we will be doing soil borings to figure out whether we can do a standard foundation or whether they have to drive piles. So we're not sure whether we're going to have any excavated material coming off the site. So, you know, that is something that if we do have a bulk of excavated material, yes, we have no problem with pulling it off-site, but if it's a small amount of gravel that we have to move to in order to do piles or something like that, then the gravel will probably just be utilized on-site.
As long, yeah, as long as on the gravel.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Also, a letter from Mark Etamiani, Assistant Town Engineer, regarding this application dated April 13th. The site for the new building lies in a FEMA flood zone VE elevation 13.0, NAVD 88. In accordance with the town flood ordinance, the applicant has two options to comply with the ordinance. Number one, the building needs to be designed to meet the effects of wave action on the structure, or number two, the applicant can apply for variance to the regulations from the Building Code Board of Appeals as the structure is used as functionally dependent as defined by the flood ordinance. You're aware of that, too?
Yes, exactly. And the, once we get, if we get this approval, then we go to the next phase of figuring out, okay, what are we going to be putting in there? How are we going to be putting it in there? And then, you know, we'll work with the FEMA compliance at that point.
It's pretty, it's pretty serious, really, compliance stuff.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Could you describe the neighborhood, what's...
Well, there's a vacant piece of land here. He uses it, he's got a dock and he does lobster, I think, off of it. And then, just adjacent to that property is Chaffinch Island Park. And then, there's another boatyard over here, Bayberry Creek Marina. I do actually have an aerial view. The latest one is from 2014, October 2014. An aerial view that shows the whole adjacent area. I have two copies, sorry. Then I do have another view from March of 2012. This is the nearest one I could find to what the winter conditions are of the site. This is... Yeah, there are a lot of boats.
Is there a limitation to the size of the boat?
This is brown, yeah.
Sure. Is there a limitation to the size of the boat you can have? That's a narrow road.
I don't, I don't know. I know most of the boats come in off the, they have a travel line right here, and they come right off the water as the yard can be worked on and then put back on the water. Some boats that store over winter here, but a lot of the boats that they work on here are boats that come in from Marina, so they have to sort us, right?
Because I was thinking about, the boat itself is not that wider road than the water. They have the problem transporting on a broadway.
I really don't think they transport many boats on the road.
And that's not an answer, but it's causing...
I, I, I don't know.
You know, that's fine, that's fine.
See, this is, this is...
Sure.
You do want... So this is, this is Brown's Boatyard?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought we were next to it.
So they're Bayberry Creek Marina.
We're clearing all the boats.
Excuse me?
So all these boats are going to be gone?
No, the building is right in this area here where these boats are.
That's in 2012.
Yeah, this is 2000, this is March of 2012. I printed this one to give an idea of what the site looks like over the winter. That's the only one that I could find that was close to a winter situation, and...
So something like 10 or 20 percent of the boats are actually going to be, the boats in these boats are going to be displaced, and really the rest of the boat storage is going to be...
Yes, yes. And here is a photo from September of 2010. This was the closest one that I could find to a summer situation. Most of the boats are gone, and they're in water.
That's what they're for. Have they done work on Chaffinch Island?
Yes, it's actually completed.
That's my point.
Yes. Okay.
It's pretty, it's pretty...
Hey, guys, guys, oh, gotta keep it like on the record so she can hear what's cooking. So I have a question. When we build this, this work shed barn thing, what is going to become of all the boats that will be stored in the footprint of that building when they need to be stored in the winter?
I don't know. I think maybe they'll store less boats on-site. They have the option of telling people to go elsewhere. I mean, they're, they're not going to be able to increase their footprint because they have what they have, and there, there's no plan to and there's no room to expand on their footprint. All around them is marshland and river. They're, you know, they're limited to the space they have, so they may have to tell some people, you have to go elsewhere to store your boats for the winter.
Are they planning on making it a heated facility?
It is heated, it will be, yes.
So help me out here, if it's in a VE plus zone?
The oil burner will be elevated, inability will be elevated above the flood zone per FEMA requirements. All furnaces have to be above the flood zone. The oil tank will be anchored in a self-contained unit and vented above the flood zone per FEMA requirements. The oil tanks can be in a flood zone, but the vents and the fill pipes for them have to be above the base flood elevation, and they have to be anchored into the ground so they don't move if a flood does come in. That's per FEMA guidelines.
Then what does that create from?
The, excuse me?
The base of elevation?
To be above that?
The elevation here is 13, and the site right now is right around 5. And we're proposing the building at, the floor at 5.2. And there is a mezzanine part of the building up about halfway, and that is where the furnace would be.
Just want to make sure they're aware of those...
Oh, no, I, they are well aware. I've made them well aware of all this. Yeah, whoever designs the building, the design that I have here by Mungar Construction was just a loose concept plan of this is what we could do, but what actually gets designed is going to be a whole different ballgame because it's going to have to conform to a lot of regulations.
Are we approving the possibility of piling right now?
If we could, because we don't know until we do the soil borings exactly whether we're going to have to do piling or a foundation.
Is that actually in the, in the application? It is?
What says construction of a 35-by-55 building, so if we need a piling, that would require a construction.
Okay. So we've already got it.
We didn't specify one way or another because until we made soil borings, we don't know what we're going to have to do.
What's that? Any other questions? Last chance. Questions from the audience? Yes?
Hi, I'm Susan Egan. I live at 144 Chaffinch Island. I've lived on the street since 1979. I walk the street three times a day with my dog. By no stretch of the imagination am I saying that I don't want this to occur. Dave is a great neighbor, he's been a great friend, I want, he's a local business, I want to see him succeed, and whatever he needs to do to make his business succeed is worthwhile to the town of Guilford. The only question I have about this is the location of the building, because what I understand, it's going to be right on the road. And if you've ever gone down to Chaffinch Island, there's Bayberry Marina first, and there's Brown's Boatyards, and there's lovely marshes, and there's lovely boats, and there's buildings that are recessed back from the road. Now, what I think Dave is proposing is to put a huge structure right on the road, and from an aesthetic standpoint, I have a question about that. I have no problem if he relocates it back towards the back where the other buildings are, but I think from, as I said, from an, and I can't say that word, a beautification point of view, it's going to be a bad on the building.
It's about 55 feet off there to the...
And, you know, it's going to be 30 feet high.
Yes.
And that's large.
Have you gone before designer review?
No, I have not.
So as I said, I like Dave, like the business, he's a good neighbor, I have no questions about approving the plan, I'm in favor of his business. The only thing I question is the actual location of the building. If it was recessed back further toward the other buildings, might let me? Thank you.
So designer review was not interested, or are you...
No, it required, right? I, I didn't think it was required.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a special permit, it's just a site plan.
Has this gone before staff and the meeting branch?
Mm-hmm, yes, it has. We've all reviewed it.
They don't really...
You don't put CAM in the...
No, I mean, it's, it's a site plan, so we, if it meets the zoning requirements, we're more or less required to approve it. Now with CAM, you do have more leeway, but it has to be related to the coastal resource.
But we have to individually put CAMs in the resource.
Right, but what I understand is not so much the view that's being impacted, it's person's feelings to the, you know...
Aesthetics.
Yeah, aesthetics of it.
So, so some perspective, this would be about the size, footprint of a typical, it's 17, it's 1825 feet in terms of core area, so that would be a medium-sized house in Guilford? Is that fair?
Yes, yes.
Well, right now, we're just gathering information. Any other questions? Last chance. Any other questions from us? Reflections? Got a motion close? Or not it? No, wait, wait, wait.
We've got to go to the next meeting.
Yes, not close.
Table two, next. No, no, it's a site plan and CAM, so we can act on it.
Site plans can go now.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so it is a motion to close that, I guess.
I second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, sir. Can I get a motion for Paula Calzada?
You want the argument there?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Paula?
Hi.
Hi. So we were with us last, last time, and we had a problem with the notices, but that's been fixed and you've re-noticed, and are there any other upshots of this, or...
I haven't heard of her.
I haven't. Good. Any more conversations with the neighbors or issues with them?
No, no further issues. In fact, one of the neighbors that was there, came and talked to me afterwards and said that she was fine with it. She just wanted to make sure it was okay with the town.
Well, that's good. So do we have any new questions, or we're all set? All set on this side?
Yep.
Anyone have any questions or comments? No? Okay, so can I get a motion to close this, I guess?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's...
Can I get a motion for reopening Guilford Agricultural? This is the closing of the three walls.
So moved.
Second, this one's already open.
Right. Reo, okay, reopen. This is four sides. Right. No, three sides. I get it. So would, do we have any new information, ma'am?
No, other than, as permitted, the three sides have been put up. That fourth side has been left open pending approval, and that's kind of where we're at.
So, do we have any other questions on our side here? Nothing? Nothing, all set? Any questions from the audience? All right, so good. So we're going to deliberate this in just a minute, but thank you. Can I get a motion to close this?
Do we have statements in favor, or statements opposed, possibly from the audience?
I didn't see anything in the package unless something's in the file.
Oh, no, I mean, nobody's...
Anybody here have a comment?
Nobody's here either way.
Sorry. We're good. So can I get a motion to close it?
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, and we are tabling the amendment, request for change to the amendment for senior housing on Mr. Russo's lot. He requested it himself by calling various commissioners, so can I get a motion to table? That's a 427?
So moved.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, so can I get approval of the agenda of the regular meeting?
So moved.
All right, first up is deliberation, West River Corporation, we can't do anything... No, we can do something there, so let's do that.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approved coastal area management and site plan for 35-by-55-foot building to be used for boat, boat storage and repair at 348 Chaffinch Island Road for West River Corporation is shown on number one coastal area management site plan for West River Corporation Brown's Boatyard, 348 Chaffinch Island Road, Guilford, Connecticut, dated February 10th, 2016, prepared by Anderson Engineering and Associates. And number two, Brown's Boatyard, Chaffinch Island Road, Guilford Sheets, A1 to A4, date November 30th, 2015, prepared by Pat Mungar Construction Company. This application is approved based upon a finding that it conforms with the zoning code and is consistent with the coastal area management policies of the state of Connecticut. And in addition, we'll add a condition to this, that the three conditions which are in Kevin McGee's letter pertaining to this application dated April 11th, 2016, be incorporated into the approval. I don't think so, because they're not going to get a building permit until they get that resolved, so I don't think we need to do that piece. Anyways, that's the motion.
That's the motion. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, so any discussion?
The only thing I wonder about is number two that's on here, because I think you represented that the design, that what you were showing is not necessarily going to be the final building plan.
It is going to look very similar to this building, of the foundation aspects of the building and the breakaway wall situation and whatnot that is to be determined.
So you're, you're saying that the outside perimeter will stay the same no matter what the design is?
It will look very similar to this building, yes. It will be that, that, that structure, that aspect.
I could be able to see it. I'm just worried it's going to wash away, obviously. It's like, it's like six inches above sea level all the way across.
That's actually, that's actually kind of the point of the design, I think, washed away, right, the sides, so the whole building doesn't lift, so if there's wave action or something on it, the walls actually break out. Now, what happens to the walls is a different issue, but the building itself is hopefully designed to stay and just have the water pass through it.
So if that's true, is it a concern of ours to know what's stored in that building? No. In other words, like now it's going to be used for repairs, so it's conceivable they would have cleaning compounds, degreasers, they would have lubricants, they would have all kinds of things stored in that building, and it's at a couple of inches above sea level. Is that a concern of ours?
Well, they're already doing maintenance work there, so I'm assuming they have...
It's closed, you can't...
Yeah, I'm assuming they already have that kind of material on-site. And there's nothing...
Well, the truth of it is...
Well, it might be an substantial building.
I guess the question would be, regulations regarding commercial use of that building and it be cleared on those activities, and I don't know the answer.
We're doing the... I can't follow you if you're having...
Sorry. So, so the question is, do the proposed activities in this building comply with our regulations for what building can be used for what in a VE zone? Do any of us know the answer to that question?
It's just usually we actually have a diagram that includes the vents, that includes the breakaways, that includes whether or not they're actually going to use piles or whether they're actually going to drive the foundation. There are more specs that we usually receive by now, because they know, they know the other, the other hoops that they're going to have to go through, they know the other regs that they're going to have to face down the line, so they, they take those and they apply those to the application that we've got, that we have in front of us most of the time.
So are you saying that absence of those fine details, they'd probably never gone to staff and said, all right, this, you know, we're going to have degreaser here in this facility, and, and, you know, tell staff that's what we're going to do? Right now, they've left that door open and it's kind of nebulous?
They still have to get through those same hoops, they still have to, they still have to get past the DEP regs, and they still have to get past the FEMA.
So if we say yes to this, that doesn't change what they have to mean?
Correct. But then they might, well, maybe they stayed vague enough that they won't have to come back to us.
Is this too vague for you to be comfortable saying yes to?
Well, usually we want, you know, we want the profile view, we want to see what's going to go into the ground, we want to see...
That's true.
More of the specs.
Well, it is, it is a site plan.
Wait, Lisa, what's the, what's the whispering? We should put it on the record?
She's asking for a lot of tapes, like, here and there.
That's a good point.
So with the vagueness of this application, are each of us comfortable enough to say yes to it in the fact that there could be some wide variations?
Well, I think it's a site plan application, so if it conforms to the regulations, at least the site plan piece, we have to approve it. Now, I don't know where the foundation's going to be, but they still have to conform to the FEMA regulations. I think the question is, are they going to need to put files in which you're not going to be able to see or for the foundation on the ground? Either way, I don't think it's going to affect the site plan, the foundation piece. Now, if there was other parts of it that were left to speculation, that would be a problem.
Is there enough meat on the bones to say yes to in the site plan application?
I do, I think so, from what we've seen with the plans and what's in the file. With regard to the CAM application...
Right.
You know, there's nothing in our, in the CAM regs or our regulations that deal with oil, gas, et cetera. I'm sure there are DEP regulations, FEMA regulations, and maybe federal regulations that they're going to have to conform to, but none of which is really in our jurisdiction.
Right, so, and finally, if this is going to be used for boat storage, which is what he's saying in here, not just repairs, but boat storage, I'm going to presume that the fuel tanks are going to be full. Is that a concern of ours in this area, or that's not a concern?
Not unless it's in our regulations that we could take that into account.
If it's inside, if they're going to be outside, think of it that way.
Well, they're there now, so whether it's inside or outside, the gasoline is there today, it's been there for however long they've had motorboats.
Right, but this might allow for more intense storage... Right, but this might allow for more intense storages.
I wanted to remind the commission that we did not get any negative comments from John Goucher or the environmental planner. This is a water-dependent use beside being coastal site plan and site plan application.
Where's the John Goucher?
We didn't get any negative comments from him on this application.
Do we get a positive or a neutral?
I think the applicant indicated that it had gone up to the state for review, and they received no comments.
Normally, we get something from John Goucher one way or the other.
Nah, usually it's a letter that says we don't have any, yeah. I don't know, maybe we got it, it's just not in the package. I'm not sure. I don't see it in the package tonight, though.
Well, I, I guess my concern is, I mean, is there a way that we could put another something in this actual, um, motion that says that, uh, that the, the building has to be in compliance with all CAM regulations?
I think that's, yeah, there's a little...
So, I've been, yeah, so I've been expressing skepticism.
The thing is, I, I think that we're cut, we're basically covered, like Ray said, because we, you know, the, the things that they have to face going forward, it doesn't seem like there's anything missing. So it doesn't seem like they, uh, yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't see...
You think there's enough other stuff wrapped around this beyond our, beyond our control that it's gonna make it, right?
I don't actually see it going wrong.
Okay.
All right. Frank, any thoughts? No?
No. Phil? Um, I actually think it's probably a little safer to have the building and not have the building.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just, I mean, it takes a lot to wash away a building, but if, if it was just a marginal event, you'd probably be better off having the activities inside a building than not.
Josh, you all right?
I'm okay with it. We don't have so much authority.
Good?
Four, none?
Good? Zero? All right. Uh, I didn't, I didn't seat the members, but just the regular members will be voting on this, not the alternates, although participate in the conversation, of course. All right, so, any other comments, thoughts? We have a motion before us, we have a second meeting for us, I'm gonna call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? None. Motion carries. Congratulations. Ms. Calzetta? Got a motion for Ms. Calzetta?
I can make that. Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a special permit for an accessory apartment at eighty-four Laurel Brook Drive, map ninety, lot twenty-five, for Paula Calzetta, as shown on an application dated January twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen, and drawn, prepared by the applicant dated one twenty-five, two thousand and fifteen. This application is approved based upon a finding that it conforms with the zoning code. The special permit is effective on, um, April fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, and upon filing with the town clerk.
Do we have a second?
Thirteen.
Well, Friday, it should be Friday, right?
No, it should be, uh, Friday next week.
Okay.
Uh, wait it, wait it, I'll change.
What day is it? Thirteen? See, that's the, the twentieth, I guess, or twenty-second?
It'll be, it should be effective, yes.
Twenty-second. On April twenty-second, two thousand and sixteen, and upon filing with the town clerk. All right, what, any final beating of the horse?
Call a question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, ma'am. All right. Guilford Agricultural Society.
After motion?
Go ahead, what you got?
Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approves a request from the Guilford Agricultural Society to amend conditions of approval of number three of a special permit granted on February fourth, two thousand and fifteen, to read wall shall be installed on four sides of the pavilion. This request is approved based upon a finding it conforms with the zoning code.
Second.
All right. Anything else to discuss?
Mr. Chairman, I think I actually, I reviewed the minutes, but I think I probably should review them, I might get seated for this, 'cause I wasn't on the first one.
That's fair. Um, Richard, you're gonna vote on this. All right.
I gotta be on this one, too.
Yeah. Who was here, though, right?
Oh, yeah, that's true, too.
I, I mean, I think technically Frank and I probably have reviewed it to the satisfaction of, of the commission and the applicants, but, uh, but, um...
Well, you know, I mean, this is not a real heavy hit.
Nope.
This is, this is pretty simple stuff. Why don't we just stick with the regular members?
You're talking about it from ex post facto there.
So, so you reviewed the tapes, you reviewed the tapes, yes?
I reviewed the minutes.
I, I'm okay with that, in this particular instance, because of how far up and down the road we've gone with this.
Seen the building.
That's right. We've all been in this building. So, uh, regular members are seated, we're just gonna vote on this. Are there any other comments? Regular members, any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, none? Congratulations. Thank you. Okay. Site plan is the next up. Town of Guilford, Guilford High School Building Committee, six oh five New England Road, map eighty-fourty-five, lot one-nine, site revision landscaping, 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 receiving the request action.
Looks like there's many, there's a motion. Would you like me to read it?
There's, uh, someone here's gonna present.
Oh, that's even better.
Thank goodness. Hey, Josh? Let's make a motion to receive that one.
Yeah, yeah. I'd like to make a motion to receive.
I'll say second it.
Sure.
I'm gonna do that, too. All those in favor of receiving?
Aye.
Aye. There you go. You're all set.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Fusiliere, I'm a landscape architect with my loaner, McBroom, of Cheshire. Uh, we are the landscape architects and site engineers for the Guilford High School, uh, the new Guilford High School building project. Um, now that we're getting near the end of construction, the Guilford High School Building Committee tasked us with adding some supplemental landscaping to the perimeter of the, uh, the high school property. This is an overall master plan, and it may be tough to see, but what's highlighted in green are the areas where we added additional evergreen screening, per their request. We had, uh, they had worked with neighbors and abutters to the property. We then in turn met with the building committee members at the site, walked the site, looked for gaps in the existing landscaping, identified areas where we could add additional screening, and that's what this plan represents within the project limits. And so it's, it's the upwards of seventy additional evergreen plantings, and, um, it's, it's pretty straightforward. I can go through, we have the enlargements, which are part of the site plan, um, let's just identify these pockets in a little more detail, um, but, as I said, seventy evergreen trees, filling in the gaps that were there, trying to look at the view sheds to the neighbors, see how we could improve the gaps that forms just as planting goes on in construction. There's, there's quite a bit planting under, under the original plan, and adding seventy additional trees will only help, um, screen the, the new improvements at the site, some athletic fields, and then also some views just to the, the building itself.
Do we, I don't know that we need to say anything more. Any more trees is never a problem, I think.
That's what we're hoping.
Right. Um, do we have any questions, uh, that's going?
There was one, what's the cost of one, I don't know, trees?
Uh, it came out to about fifty-five thousand dollars.
In tax dollars?
Yes.
Good. Well, good.
So, when you did, when you this plan, when you did this plan, did the neighbors that, that were in, what's the, Long Hill Farms? Are they aware of this plan, and, and, and were there any comments?
They actually met this afternoon with Mr. Mazin, representative, I'm sorry, I'm Scott Mink, the chair of the building committee. They did meet this afternoon. We have been meeting with all neighbors, including Long Hill Farms. Frankly, little too much for my preference, because the committee members are running all over the place, but they have to walk each individual neighbor who needs to, through the plans, to let them know and understand exactly what each thing means. A lot of people have a hard time understanding what a drawing actually means. So they've been doing that. Minor questions came out of this afternoon's meeting.
And they're all okay?
As okay as I think we can get everybody.
We see a lot of that. So that's good. And, nice job, by the way, thank you for all that you did. Good for you.
Thank you.
These are evergreen plantings?
Yes, these are all evergreen plantings.
Okay, said on the motion, there's also two hundred and fifty-five perennials and shrubs?
Well, that, that's part of the supplemental landscaping, there was a couple areas that were thinner than we liked, um, from the original...
So that, that's going in in addition to the...
That's going in in addition to it, yeah, that, but that was always the original intention. It's really just this island, right, that you gotta drop off.
Okay.
Do we have jurisdiction over perennials and shrubs?
Just the shrubs.
If I planned to do after that, your dad's...
You don't like a particular thing, you gotta change it now.
I have it on solid authority that we have jurisdiction over perennials and shrubs.
We do, actually, we do. Okay, lots of landscape funds. Well, good. All right, so we all set?
Uh, sure. Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a site plan revision that re-, uh, and revised landscape plan that includes seventy-five additional evergreen trees and two hundred and fifty-five perennials and shrubs for the Guilford High School, uh, six oh five New England Road, number one, uh, as shown on number one Guilford High School, six oh five New England Road, Guilford, Connecticut, landscape master plan sheet one of one dated March twenty-second, two thousand and sixteen, prepared by Maloney and McBroom and Ty So-Ken Partners Architects. Number two Guilford High School, six oh five New England Roads, Guilford, Connecticut, civil site plan landscaping sheets five dot zero to five dot three dated May tenth, two thousand and thirteen, and revised to February twenty-ninth, two thousand and sixteen. This application is approved based upon a finding that it conforms with the zoning code and that the additional evergreen trees and shrubs will enhance the new landscaping at the Guilford High School.
Second.
Those dates accurate? I thought you said, uh, then February.
Well, it was May of two thousand and thirteen, and then February two thousand and sixteen.
Okay.
No problem.
So that's great.
Takes a while, certainly.
Do we have seconds?
Second.
Yeah, that's great. Any other questions, comments, actions, no? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for suffering through, like, half a decade of this experience.
Thanks, my family.
I'm sure it's been great.
And we're always here, too, if you wanna come back and join another meetings, this goes on endless.
I'm also, thank you.
Okay, all right. Just saying. Walmart, who wants to do it?
Make a motion to receive for nine hundred Boston Coach Lilic, map forty-seven, lot one, two, B-zone, SC site plan revision, one eight seven five S-EPT, uh, of display area for plants and bad goods, March first through October thirty-first, on sidewalk in front of store. Uh, receive and request action by May fourth. Didn't we give them, like, a two-year last time?
Two years.
Two years. Did two years go by? Was that Christmas, or was that...
Well, it was the storage containers. Yeah, the two different things, the storage containers, Tom put in two, two years for the storage containers, so we're not gonna, we're not gonna have to see the storage containers next winter.
For seventeen.
But for this one, we, I think we actually did two years, two years ago.
I swear we did this.
Oh, it was two years ago? Oh, okay.
So, I, I just walked past there and it has stuff up there already, so I'm sure we already said yes to this, 'cause they wouldn't just put it there without it.
They wouldn't just put it there before we said yes?
Would they? They wouldn't do that.
They've done it every year.
It's a squirrely, squirrely year, so...
But this is more than previous years. They, they changed it to square footage instead of length, right?
Yeah, that's true. Eighteen hundred, let's say it comes out four feet, that's the standard pallet, so that means they're going across four hundred feet. The store isn't four hundred feet wide, they must be planting more than just what's up against the store.
It's the same display that you see.
Right, but we're saying yes to eighteen hundred and seventy-five square feet.
Well, you, you can't, they have to be on variance first. That's why you take action late for it.
I get it, okay, so, good.
Come to CBA?
So you're just receiving it tonight.
Right, okay, all right, all right. So we have a motion to receive?
Yes, we do. No seconds.
Say.
Reggie, could you check, in, in previous years, I think it's been more like a thousand...
Well, we need, uh, previous application, uh, diagram, because...
That would be great. I mean, if it's, if it's the same and the math was, if the sidewalk is deeper than we're imagining, then that probably works out.
It is.
It is a deep sidewalk.
And it does conform to ADA.
But we'll bring, we'll bring the...
Yeah, that sidewalk conforms to ADA, unlike...
I believe it's always better.
You done that?
Nothing, forget it. I didn't say anything.
All right, so we have, um, we have a second on this thing?
We did have a second.
All right, so all those in favor of receiving and setting that date?
Aye.
Aye. All right, applications to be received.
Well, we got one more.
Yeah.
Oh, right, Rick made it. Sorry, Rick, wherever you are back there.
Kiosk.
What you got for Rick? Receive and request action. Kiosk.
I move to receive it.
Okay. All right, so all those in favor of receiving it?
Aye.
And we're gonna take action? So what action do we need to take about this kiosk? Do we have a drawing of the plans?
Do we? It's only do.
You have two photos, or sent photos, do you have those? I got the plan. This, uh, basically, it's gonna be a kiosk, really similar to it's at Jacobs Beach, almost the same exact thing. Uh, it's for our gate guards to be able to sit and collect beach DPs or check beach passes. Um, it's gonna be identical to the Jacobs Beach one. I thought you had some pictures, but this is a design, Will Thompson designed it. Um, it's gonna be about eight feet high, and, uh, I think it's six by six. And, uh, I got, I got pictures of them, too, I can show you. There you go. Okay. Um, it's, the, the, the other positive thing about this is that that one was built by the wood shop at Guilford High School, and they're interested in building this one, too. So it becomes a great project, the high school kids have some ownership of it, uh, as they did with this one. In fact, that one at Jacobs Beach, they love the fact they got out of class, 'cause they they were down at the beach, building this thing instead of, you know, in the school. And.
I would bet it never gets analyzed.
It hasn't been analyzed, it has not, and thank God for that. But they also, a couple of them came back at the end of the day or over the weekend to finish it because they weren't able to complete it during their class hours. So they came back and they finished the shingle roof over weekend. So I assume something similar would happen here for Quant Park. It'll look basically just like that. I can't guarantee the blue sky comes with it, but.
Yes.
We try. But anyway, this is the design they're going to base it on, but I think that's worth more than this if you get to see what it's going to really look like.
Where's the location? Where's the location exactly?
It'd be in the parking area. I gotta step back and tell you the planning, the design review approved this afternoon, but with the caveat that we locate it as far back as we can to avoid traffic backup on Route seventy-seven. And certainly we'll do that. I can't tell the exact location, we're going to kind of figure that out, but it'll be well within the parking lot so we don't have that issue of traffic backup.
It's not going to be right at the entrance where.
No, no. The one at Jacob's is pretty close to the entrance. This will be in a good thirty, forty, fifty feet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We will avoid that.
Even if it does happen where traffic starts to back up, we'll just tell the gate guards, just get out of the shack and motion the cars, you know, back more into the parking lot, collect the fees there.
So the only thing, and not that it matters, but is that in the area where those underground storage things were leaking and are there any other things you need to worry about?
We don't think there were tanks, there were two that were there that came out. No, it's not that. That was farther back into the grass, like kind of little picnic area there. It won't be that area.
Good. Good surprises.
Are we in motion? Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a site plan revision for a kiosk-type shape structure to shelter park employees collecting fees at Lake Quant Park Park, thirty-nine-ten Durham Road, map one-eighteen, lot two, zone RA, as shown on an application dated April fifth, two thousand and sixteen, and aerial photograph located the structure and its photographs dated received April ninth, two thousand and sixteen.
Second. All right, any other questions, comments?
I gotta agree that it is up clear, proving it's based upon that it conforms with the findings zoning codes.
Good job. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained?
Opposed or abstained?
I'm aye. They're all ayes. Congratulations.
Thank you, thanks very much.
Thank you for everything you do. All right, now, special permits. Ed Benton.
Ed Benton.
Fourth thirteen Vine Point Road, map four, lot forty-five, zone R five, special permit, accessory apartment, basement dwelling. Receive and set public hearing dated five-fourth, continue dated five-eighteen, and sorry, second. Public hearing, can I get a motion to set those dates?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Election of officers, are we done with everything?
Why are we doing that?
Did we do that last? Can I get a motion to move that to last?
Yeah, so moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we're doing elections of officers last. I, you know, Will Thompson is a great guy, and we were all talking about how it'd be great if he was, and I'm going to do something I promised I wouldn't do, I'm going to appoint him, just because we all agree that he's a great guy and should be appointed. So I'd like to, as one of my last actions as chair, appoint Will Thompson to this line review committee. So that's done. Mandatory referral, town of Guilford acquired Guilford Land Trust, seven-tenths of an acre land located off of East Bearhouse Hill as depicted on map four-two-two-six of the Woodland subdivision filed in town clerk's office. Do we know anything about this? Do we care?
There's a motion that they asked us to read.
Please.
I'll read it and then maybe discuss.
Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission reports favorably to the Board of Selectment on the following acquisitions. A, that the town acquire from the Guilford Land Conservation Trust, a point-seven acre parcel of land located off of East Bearhouse Hill as depicted on map four-two-two-six of the Woodland subdivision filed in the town clerk's office. B, that the town acquire from Allison Pastorfield Associates, Inc., a portion of a parcel of land as well known as lot thirty-nine on Assessor's map seventy-eight for purposes of establishing a boundary line which was at issue.
Do we know anything?
I know something about the second one, but I don't know anything about the first one. Maybe somebody.
One second.
I'll second it. Does Reg or somebody know anything about the first?
She's just calling somebody who's coming to the hearing.
Oh, okay.
I have a folder and it's got things in it.
I can explain the second one. The second one is the town transfer station and the property, actually, that we were looking at maybe the zone change on the MUC two property. There was an issue there about the property line as to the town encroached on some pieces of it. We think that Russ Waldo encroached on other parts. So this has been going on for a long time. They finally agreed to settle this, and we're going to wind up getting some extra land for the town. It's going to be where the transfer station is to, so we settled the dispute as to where the property line really is.
We're not paying for it?
No.
Okay.
No, this is going to clean that up and we're going to not go after the piece that he might be on, and he's not going to go after the piece that.
Full of horse training.
Exactly, to straighten that out. I don't know what the first one is, though.
I don't either.
That's actually a recommendation from the map motion commission, and it's a parcel about this size, and it's just parking lot, and that really bit the land trust, not against anything, and it's based on the use of this parking lot, it was traded, and Joe Hart.
Good. Personally, right before the bridge?
Yeah.
That Sullivan drive. Yeah, you're thinking of the other side. Yeah. Sullivan's on the side by.
Because they've been there for a long time.
Yeah, that side. Right, you know what? Let's just do it.
Yeah, the deal is. We already have a motion, so we could call the question.
Do we have a second on the motion?
Yes, I did second it.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, none? Passed. Request from Marla Rubino, four-four-eight Peddlers Road, map seventy-two, lot twelve-twenty-eight, request interpretation of two-seventy-three thirty-eight seat parking and storage of commercial vehicles with a capacity, what does with a capacity of more than one nap tons mean?
There's a letter.
Give it up.
Do you need to open?
Does that mean it weighs more than a half, one and a half tons?
That's exactly it, we don't know. So I'm Marla Rubino, four-four-eight Peddlers Road. I have a ice cream truck, nineteen-seventy-five P twenty ice cream truck, and it was parked in my driveway, you know, we got it last year, parked in my driveway, and then we found out in October that it wasn't allowed to be seen by a neighboring lot or the road. Just not really seen by the road, but my neighbor does see it. So we were planning on taking it to storage anyway for the winter, as we did, and now we're getting ready for the season again, and it has come up that we have to plug it in at night because it's got a cold play freezer, so we need to have it parked in our driveway. And the regulation, as stated, Reggie was nice enough to send that to me, that it's one and a half tons or greater, can't be, it's a three-quarter ton ice cream truck. So I have pictures, it's not really big, it's the old-fashioned Hanyal as well, recognized.
But if it's three-quarter ton, why are we even?
I don't know, because I was told it can't be there.
Not a commercial vehicle?
Well, it says it here, no commercial vehicle with a capacity of more than one and a half tons shall be kept in residential zone.
Do we have a judge? Where we, where everything above one and a half tons is okay, but commercial vehicles that are tiny or?
No, no, I think it's a, with a capacity of more than one and a half tons shall be kept in residential zone. So I think it's, I know it must tent it, yeah.
Right, well, and then it says that you're allowed one of an allowable size, which I assume is below one and a half tons, as long as it's not visible from the street or another lot, and it's stored in such a manner, so we're thinking, couldn't we store it inside in a structure if the neighbor can't see? And she just put up a six-foot fence, which though she can't see as well.
Well, this is a three-quarter ton truck, right?
Well, we talked about carrying capacity with the regulation. The truck is capable of carrying more than that, it's a commercial vehicle, it has to be plugged in in order to, right, overnight? Yeah, has to be plugged in, and it has to be restocked.
Do we know?
The way I read the regulation, my interpretation of the regulation is it cannot be stored in a residential zone.
So what does this state mean that with the capacity of more than one and a half tons?
So can the truck haul another?
You can't haul anything.
What's the, what is of the seventy-three or seven, what year is it? Yeah, I see it.
Parking?
Yeah.
Is parking a truck intermittent based on storing?
Why do you think that it could hold more than?
Ice cream's heavy.
Half a ton?
Right, but the whole vehicles are rated.
Thousand pounds of ice cream.
They tell you. Yeah, it says it here, it should say it. Oh, here we go. Series, do you know what series it is?
Oh, so that, you have the email sent?
Yeah.
So if you follow by the VIN number.
Oh, VIN number, okay.
It says, right, so the series is two, three-quarter ton because it's the number two.
Okay.
If you follow by that.
So it, I don't think that it's, that it weighs three-quarters of a ton. I think that it can haul three-quarters of, I think the capacity is three-quarters of a ton.
It says capacity.
Yeah. There's no way the truck weighs three-quarters of a ton.
No, but that's not what they're talking about. When we're talking about the capacity of any vehicle, it's always a rated capacity stated on the side of the truck and everything.
There's no way that they have another half a ton of ice cream.
No, but that doesn't matter either, it's the rated capacity as stated on the registration. If it's less than one and a half tons, then we don't have jurisdiction. I read it.
So, but you're, but.
But it's a commercial vehicle.
Right, but we have this unfortunate verbiage in our thing which says more than one and a half. Right. So she, if she comes in, if the vehicle's rated less than one and a half, with this in our rules and regulations, then it's not under our jurisdiction.
Wait, but why is it you think differently than I understand? Because I want to.
Well, because this is a residential zone.
Yep.
Marla has an ice cream truck riding on it. It's a, it's a commercial vehicle as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, no one would doubt that.
And more commercial than somebody's pickup truck with their landscape.
I mean, if you had an F three-fifty.
That's going to haul more than.
Yeah, Frank's car.
Yeah, Frank's truck. With Dunkin' Donuts right across the back of it.
I want the commission to interpret the regulation, and if you think that this vehicle that she has doesn't fall within that category, that's fine with me.
No, I think it's a wise thing to do, I mean, you know, this is like the electrician or plumber who has a truck that keeps the truck in their driveway, but we didn't want it to get too big, so I think the limit was set at one and a half tons. So it doesn't, it just says commercial vehicle, doesn't say ice cream truck or plumber's truck or dump truck.
But a three-quarter ton truck is anywhere from sixty-four hundred GBWs to six thousand max. Right, so just, Phil said it as a joke, but are we in trouble if we have people that have registered vehicles that are more than gross vehicle, weight rating of one and a half tons? Have we been letting people park them and now we have to stop them?
If a neighbor complains.
So any, anyone that has a commercially registered vehicle, more than a GBR, GWR, one and a half tons, is in violation of this rule?
Yes.
In a residential zone. Commercial vehicle in a residential zone. So a commercial vehicle is one that's registered as commercial plates?
Mine has combination plates if that helps.
Right. I think we're beyond you, actually. We're done with you. I think you're under one and a half.
Do you want me to read the letter into the record or can your family represent your audience? So have one, two wheels on the back axle or four tires?
Four tires.
Then it's, the same weight load as an F two-fifty or less.
It's not, so what we're talking about here is not actually, in the strictest sense, it is not the size of the truck, it is the capacity of the truck. And we all.
And the regulation further states that any commercial vehicle of any allowable size, when parked on a residential lot, should not be seen except from the lot that it's parked on. So that means.
Is this kind of what applies what is a commercial vehicle? And that's what happens.
Okay. May be parked or stored in such a manner as to be visible from any lot other than the lot on which it is located or from any street.
So this thing needs to go into the garage no matter what capacity it has.
She doesn't have a garage.
Right.
A garage.
A garage.
Or a.
Exactly. Or what, temporary membrane covered.
I thought we started controlling those.
Is it registered to you personally or commercially registered?
It's registered to me personally, actually.
But that's not determinative for us because we, we're dealing with the function of the item, not how it's registered, right?
We should know what the function of the item is. She just. But are we dealing with that?
She's selling ice cream.
Is the registration what's? It's how it's registered is how it should be, that's the function of it.
Combination.
Is there any action?
Combination personally registered.
Is there any action we need to take other than our jurisdiction?
Well, yeah, if you feel the regulation, as you interpreted it, you're a commission, these are your regulations, and you wanted to find all the interpreters of your regulations, you feel that ice cream truck like Marla's can be parked on a residential zone because of the wording in the regulation, then it'll be the end of the.
Have you had any conversations with your neighbor? I mean, are they mad or?
Yeah, she's.
Clearly, that's why we're here.
Well, I didn't know she was.
She didn't say anything, she told her neighbors on the other side, and then she spoke to Reggie numerous times, and I apologize for that. She also put up a fence and ten giant red cones across my driveway and called the fire department on us for having fire pit fires, and she doesn't like the truck.
Well, let's take this a little, I mean, not to belabor this, but no commercial vehicles. First question is, is it a commercial vehicle?
Yes.
It probably is, because you're using it to sell ice cream.
Okay. With a capacity of more than one and a half tons, well, that's not one and a half tons, so we stop right there. Then it says no more than one commercial vehicle, which this is, of any allowable size, which this is, when kept in a residential zone, may be parked or stored in such a manner as to be visible from any lot other than the lot to which it's located or from any street. There's where I think you might run into the problem.
So no more than one can be kept that way?
Right, you can only have.
Well, one can be kept.
You can only have one commercial vehicle, which is less than one and a half tons because that's an allowable size.
Right.
When kept in a residential zone, which this is, may be parked or stored in such a manner as to be visible from any lot other than the lot on which it is located or from any street.
So more than one.
More than one. So one would be allowed. So one would be okay, is the way I read that.
I'm getting that too, so.
So I think she's okay.
I agree. Don't forget to bring ice cream now.
And that's where, like, if you're the plumber or the electrician and you have two or three trucks, you've got a problem, but if you have one truck, you're okay.
So we are saying as a commission that because it's only one, it's okay for it to be visible.
As long as it's less than one and a half tons.
It's got to be less than, which this is, I think this is okay. My reading. It's still a go in the hump.
And you have no other commercial vehicles?
It's still go in the hump.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no other commercials.
Then that's right.
Thoughts? Comments?
Do we need to do? I think the sense, we declare. What she's doing is okay. It would be better if she put up a cover over it so that she cooled on the neighbor, but.
The whole lot is visible from neighboring lots.
And we do regular at those schoolhouses now, so that's more trouble than what I agree.
So if there were a second commercial vehicle, it would have to be covered.
You couldn't have a second.
Where we would not be.
You wouldn't want to keep it there anymore.
No, I wouldn't.
But then also.
And it's only there six months out of the year.
And since it's under one and a half tons capacity, and since there is only one, it can be visible under our current rates.
That's what we have the right to do.
Do you agree with that?
Okay.
Probably.
I don't know. I kind of agree with it. I think it's fine.
We have to go by the letter of. We declare.
Well, I think we've interpreted it to say in this situation it's okay because it's under one and a half tons, it is commercial, and she is allowed to keep one commercial vehicle of an allowable size, which we've determined this is, in a residential zone. And she does not have to keep that one hidden from the other neighbors, the way it's written. We could change it, but.
Do we need to make a decision on this?
We're just declaring.
You're interpreting it.
In this case.
I'm on board that this is cool.
Okay.
Good luck, make money.
Thank you so much. I'll bring you ice cream.
Have fun with your people.
Thank you. My ear will be thrilled.
Sure, we'll be here.
I'll trade you, I'll bring you one ice cream. I owe you one, what place it on?
Don't give us anything. Yeah. Sure, you want to, uh, I can make a motion, so we can start. Okay, voted the Gilbert Planning and Zoning Commission approval request from Nico Amtes, Shoreline Diner, three forty-five Boston Post Road, for a minor site plan modification should we locate the dumpster to the rear northeast corner of the parking lot as shown on a drawing dated April thirteenth, two thousand sixteen. This request is approved based upon a finding that it conforms with the zoning code. Do we have a copy of that?
Second.
Thank you, yeah.
I thought it was... Maybe we should do my stuff.
We're not gonna be here at time. I don't think we're gonna be here, so if we...
Yeah.
It's next to the communications, though, guys.
Who knows, I shouldn't say that.
Yeah, the, so the northeast corner is next to the communications tower as well as the fencing, which I assume he's not gonna get in the way of the entryway to the communications, and I assume that...
Over here, you want some... Oh, he did.
He did, okay.
There's no problem with interference with dumpster, because it's at the base, but I'm not an expert, and he's moving, he's moving a giant metal box much, much closer to a lot of different types of...
But if you remember, there used to be a road that went into whatever road that is there.
Yeah.
And they placed, and they built a, that little driveway.
Yep, right.
So he's putting it up in that corner, nowhere is it near his communications devices.
So he's pushing it, he's in farther faster.